I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I missed all the festivities on Thursday night meetings there. Other than that, we do have a department head report tonight. And we will be going into closed session towards the end of the meeting to discuss an offer on real property in the Heatherwood flat two. And that is my report. Councilmember LeBeau?
Uh, I think I just had our working session.
Okay, alright. Councilmember Hertzberg?
I had the property negotiations and our joint, uh, working session and our working session.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Councilmember?
We had a property negotiations meeting along with policies and procedures on the working session.
And Councilmember?
Policies and procedures in the special sessions.
Special sessions, alright. Then we have one department head report tonight. Mr. Mergon?
Alright, thank you. First of all, Don at the library, they're trying to ramp up all their summer programs again. And they have asked to use the Zeeville Park and it is going to be for a bookstroll. They're gonna be putting some laminated little books out there. And I believe it's gonna be next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So if anybody wants to look up there, if you want to sign up, you do have to go through the library. Um, remember cleanup day and the household hazardous waste is again on July the 25th. Um, this year is also our scheduled sampling for lead and copper. Um, lead and copper, we've done this, I think it started in the early 90s when it came down from EPA. Uh, lead, you recall, is not normally found in any natural drinking water. It gets in there via the plumbing. Um, prior to the 1950s, they used a lot of lead pipes. And these lead pipes obviously caused it. In Pansyl here, we do not have any lead pipes remaining. The other area was in the solder that was used, that was always in, which still is. That's where it really comes from today. EPA is still working on the rules of what is gonna change. Uh, the biggest change is any fixture is going to be limited to point two-five percent of lead. Currently today, most, or pass, I should say, had eight percent lead in it. So it's quite a drop. Um, if anybody does want to get their house tested for lead, we do target times that were built prior to 1986. So anybody does want to get on that list, please call me. Um, airport, the FAA, I heard today that is going to be out here probably in force. And they're gonna put up a temporary control tower for us during the flying, which is kinda surprising. That is again on August the 9th. I guess I've had very little to do with that, so we're gonna have to hand all the credit to Tom and his crew that's been working on that. Uh, let's see, then the park, the constant in the park is going to be starting again July the 2nd, fishing pier, hopefully. All the parts that come in now, and it's looking like Wednesday morning, we're gonna possibly push it out, so. And again, the reservations are actually starting to ramp up at the Veterans Park, um, mostly into July and August. And the splash pad has been quite busy too, so. And our crew of, we've seen today, the crack ceiling crew is here. Tomorrow you will also see a patching crew in town. And I guess, any questions? That's all of that.
Okay, any questions for Ron? Guess not. Thank you very much. Then we have the consent agenda before us, the minutes from those seven meetings on page one, and the vouchers on page two totaling 192,089 dollars and 97 cents.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by, I believe, Hertzberg. Is that correct?
Yes.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And carried. Alright, new business. We have some visitors tonight from Yarman Ford. And they've been planning a family outdoor drive-in movie night. Uh, they were planning on doing it over by the dealership, but we may have a better spot.
Yes.
Alright.
So, thank you.
Yeah, we don't have a microphone, but, uh, go ahead.
So, thank you for having us here tonight. So yes, we're going to be doing our movie theater night behind the dealership, hoping to use that lot. Um, but with some good guidance, we realized that it might be too bright, the traffic might get too congested, noise in the freeway, things like that, parking would be an issue. So Jennifer and Ron, um, offered up the Lake Avenue property, so we're just gonna see if we can use that instead.
I move to allow Yarman Ford to host a family outdoor movie night on the city's property at 605 Lake Avenue.
Second.
And Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to allow Yarman Ford to host a family outdoor movie night on the city's property at 605 Lake Avenue. Discussion?
Uh, I, I just have one concern, to make sure that the ambulance, the driveway is blocked off or whatever, so people aren't on that.
We did go over that and I did inform them that they likely would need to have some type of fence or at least a rope across there. And I did talk to Steve Sting, and yes, that was a concern of his too, but he said other than that, yes.
Yeah, and I did talk to somebody and we do have fencing coming that night too, so we'll handle all kinds of the regulations.
Chief?
Is the entrance gonna be put in by then? And accessible?
It will be accessible, yes.
Okay. As I say, 'cause without that ambulance, if that doesn't get put in, there's no way to get in there, so.
Over the curb.
Over the curb.
Okay. Well, it'd be less obtrusive than having, uh, three or four days of carnival there, so.
I think it's a great idea, so.
Yeah, I do too. Thought we have not voted. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Negered? Alright.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Sure, now everybody leaves except Bill. Alright, next we have ordinance number 16, third series rental property, a moratorium on page eight. And, where are we at here? Okay. And Alicia will give us a verbal report.
I don't really have a whole lot to report. I just, um, was bringing this forward as a, something for us to discuss, given our current housing shortage. Um, as well as the request not so long ago by our building inspector to put together a rental inspection process. Um, so I think with our housing shortage, you know, I wanted to talk about this as, is this a way that we can encourage families moving here to purchase and settle down? And sort of bolster our town versus people purchasing to rent them out and having transient or, um, not necessarily people who would be invested in our community. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring it for discussion.
I got, first of all, I'm 100% against it because most people rent before they buy. Uh, very few families come in and buy a house right when they move here, after they find jobs. Secondly, um, there's a lot of places that, well, I have three people in my office right now looking for someplace to rent, and there's no place to rent. Third, I would have never bought my building downtown and remodeled it without being able to put a renter on top of it. It's impossible to justify a building in this, especially in the downtown area, without having a renter. So, I think we should look at a rental ordinance, but not stop any kind of rental at all. This town needs people, it needs workers, and it needs housing.
Yeah, I know the planning board was not in favor of this. We all had stronger, weaker opinions against it, but I don't think anybody expressed an opinion before this. Um, my concern, which Bill and I discussed at the planning meeting, is the problem with rentals is sort of a double-edged sword. If you cut off rentals, then it might make the homes cheaper for first-time homebuyers, but first-time homebuyers are, their homes are so expensive that first-time homebuyers can't afford to buy anyway, so the only way they can get into a house is in a rental. I don't think this solves the problem. I know the planning board was not against it. I'm still, the planning board was against it, excuse me, um, and I'm still not in favor of it.
Yeah, it's, uh, like you say, kind of a double-edged sword, is we do need something in place for some type of a rental ordinance to, uh, you know, to put a moratorium on rental, which would just be, you know, the, um, R1 single and two-family residential, and then in the downtown, you have a commercial. So, you know, the, the full rental, you know, multifamily would still be, um, okay. But I, I think the way to go is to look at it broadly and come up with a, an actual rental ordinance.
So, I'm not saying I'm totally unfair in this either, but I just will say that, um, then, one of the reasons given two weeks ago for passing the not being able to have storage units downtown was to light a fire under the planning commission. So I just wanna put that out there as well as, you know, is this something that would speed that process along?
Would it speed the process along?
Of, of putting together of some kind of plan for rental inspections and licensing.
So I know Brad's been working on ordinance now for March? April is when we took that up in planning, I think. It was earlier this year Brad looked at it.
We last met in March. We did not meet in April maybe due to COVID and we didn't have any actual items. Um, but yeah, I can realize this rental ordinance is different than what he was, um, proposing as a rental ordinance. His rental ordinance was actually inspecting the rentals that exist for safety, kinda doing a checklist. So you would have, um, fire, um, and proper matchfire detectors, you would have windows or escape routes for those, um, bedrooms. You would have railings for stairways. Um, this is a little bit different than what he was working on. This is allowing homes to be rented, um, apartments, you know, to be rented above, uh, commercial buildings. So it's a little bit different. So actually this got us a whole different sidetrack on, in planning. Um, so we did not do anything with what Brad was working on at the last meeting because we took, um, this up instead.
But aren't they kind of one in the same? I mean, if you look at, in the ordinance itself, letter A, the purpose, you know, it's because the planning commission is concerned with expansion of the rental of residences. And while it conducts its study of regulation in rental properties, which may include limitations on the density of rental properties, um...
The problem is that the planning commission isn't concerned with that. And that was one of the things that we discussed heavily, is that, I, the planning commission is concerned with the building codes and the safety issues that Brad has brought to our attention. I don't think that there's been a consensus on the commission or on the committee about the expansion of residences. I don't think that's been voiced. I get it. I don't like that investors are coming in and buying up houses so that families can't. I just don't think this solves that problem.
And there's been quite a few people who are renting houses that bought the house to renting.
Uh, I think we should let the, the market dictate what's happening. If there's more renters than there's units available, why would we wanna quit letting people buy homes to be rented? If there's no renters out there, they're gonna quit buying homes because they aren't gonna find somebody to rent.
But there's both. And the people who want to buy the homes to actually live here in our town are being pushed out by other investors who are coming in to purchase, to rent.
Yeah, I mean, that's from my own experience as well. You try and buy a single-family home, a starter home, you can't because you get into a bidding war with an investor who has cash. Not someone who's coming in on like an FHA loan or something like that. So the seller, you know, they'll take the cash and run. And then the homes in general are driven up sky high.
I think what Brad probably needs a little bit of guidance on, what the planning commission wants him to look into in terms of, um, a rental ordinance. There's, there's lots of different things that rental ordinances can do. They can address those safety issues, they can address density issues for rental. Uh, you know, do you wanna limit how many rentals you're gonna allow in a block of R1, for example? Or is that not something you want to be involved in? I mean, I think some people feel like a lot of rentals, too many rentals, starts to affect the, the value of, of ownership. But maybe, maybe you don't really want him to do that, but I, I think to move the process along, he probably needs a little bit of guidance in terms of what kinds of things you want him to... Or maybe you just want him to bring something to you and then he can criticize it and he can go back and, you know, work on it. But I think, I, I'm not sure where he's at. That seems like a long time to work on a rental ordinance. Um, it seems like it should be fairly simple to bring something for consideration to planning. If, if he had, if he had an idea of what it was that he was trying to address, what the issues were.
Well, we obviously do have a shortage of rental, yeah, a shortage of all housing, based on our, uh, housing study update, um, showed us to, uh, put a moratorium to me, you know, if it was just gonna be very short-term and, and that there was going to be the pressure to get something done, I would be okay with that, but just to put a moratorium on and then hope that we get something ironed out and taken care of, um, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
I don't think planning would get this done. Maybe by the end of the year, we could hammer it out, but it's not going to be a one-meeting thing.
So isn't that kind of up to us? Like, couldn't we put a six-month moratorium? Like, we could set a time limit for this to expire? Is that...
I think we should just make it a, um, a priority for the planning commission and go with that. I'm not doing any moratorium whatsoever.
I mean, we could also, I guess, it would also be up to us if we wanted to just do this on R1 and our zoning, single and two-family.
I think it needs to be comprehensive. I think, you know, to, to pick and choose and doesn't make a whole lot of sense either.
I think it should be sent back to planning and so they can come up with and tell them as soon as possible and direct, um, Brad Millhop to start working on it as a priority also.
So are you thinking of the ordinance that you would like, um, to be moved down to cover not only safety, which you originally started, but the density of rents per block?
I would say it's worth looking at.
Can we, I'll be striking out if you don't?
I do wanna make another ordinance that's impossible to, um, to enforce. So you're gonna go and knock on doors and find out which place is a rental and which one is not? You're gonna go by tax status and see which one's a rental, which is not? Um, how are you gonna find out what density the rentals are?
It's the same way you're gonna do permitting. I mean, you've got the same issue with every part of a rental ordinance. You know, it's, it's part, it's gonna start out as an honor thing and then people are gonna report each other. If somebody knows somebody else is renting and they're not being permitted and they're having to do it, they're probably gonna, probably gonna tell somebody. I mean, it's just like everything else, you know, you're...
Okay.
We don't have investigators to go investigate who's renting, but we're gonna hear about it eventually, once you start doing this. But I, but I, I believe that, you know, this is a, if you're gonna do a rental ordinance, it's a process where you're, you're gonna wanna get some of the landlords involved in the discussion and putting it together. You don't wanna just have this come out of planning and be presented as a, as an ordinance, I think.
Did we try that or ask for that?
Actually, Brad has, um, two people that are willing to come to the planning commission meeting and talk about it, put their input, you know, he has two people that...
Oh, but we hit COVID.
And then he hit COVID, but he does have two landlords that are interested in serving on that. You know, he's been coming to a planning, um, board meeting, he getting some other insight.
Yes. I, I kinda have a problem too. You're gonna, let's say you limit two rentals per block or one per block, and there's already three there. What two are you gonna say, "No, you can no longer rent"?
Well, they'd be grandfathered in, just like all the other ordinances we pass.
Okay.
Right.
But I mean, that would be, if I bought a place tomorrow to rent...
That would be the purpose of the moratorium, so that there's no more that we would have to grandfather in at this point.
I still like the market dictating.
What was that last part? You?
I, I like the market dictating, uh, if there's...
Well, yeah.
People willing to rent and there's people willing to buy rentals, I don't have a problem.
I, I think it needs to be pretty comprehensive, you know, with, with what Brad is working on and then to look at the other, the other issues as, you know, the density and, and, uh, you know, even take a look at what we currently allow or don't allow in the different, uh, you know, zoning, zones. Anybody have any other...
And Don, Tom, I definitely, uh, any area that's, uh, has a living apartment above would be rental because business owners aren't interested in living above their business. When the bu, when these buildings were built, that's where the business owner lived, but the times have changed.
But right now in C1, that requires a conditional use permit, doesn't it?
That's the proposal. That's the proposed amendment.
I thought that we already had that in our existing...
We do not.
Are you sure?
Um, if we do, it, it's not the same provision that allows owners, I mean, owners living above their business isn't allowed use. I don't know if we have a conditional use.
I thought that, had, I thought we had it as a conditional use if it was somebody other than the owner or an employee living above.
I don't, I don't, I think that was a change that was talked about when we were proposing to revise the code and that the, the zoning part never got done, but I could be wrong.
I could be wrong too. It's been a long time since we had that discussion.
Thought you were gonna say it's been a long time since you've been wrong.
No. No, that's pretty regular.
Here comes the answer lady.
Um, it is in C1, which is, um, central business, residents when included as an integral part of the principal building to be occupied by the owner or his employee is a permitted use. Um, a conditional use are multiple family dwellings provided that the use is either adjacent to, um, or provided off-street parking. There's no conflict with adjacent commercial activities. Single and two-family dwellings, provided they are compatible with adjacent uses and meet all the requirements of section 36.5.
So it is a conditional use, at least.
That was, I believe that was the discussion we had, was that it was basically a conditional use to make sure that there was enough parking, off-street parking, but...
One thing to consider too for the future is that, you know, if we do look at, you know, we've talked about downtown redevelopment or whatever too, to look at what's done, been done ordinance-wise in areas that have gone through that process with, you know, multifamily units within a downtown area. So are we set to let, uh, Brad and planning and Jennifer and Bill work on this? Okay. Alright. And when there's no action required, we have a consensus to do that, then we will go on to item C, groundwater storage tank. Ron?
Okay, it's been approximately 15 years since we, uh, did a major inspection and, uh, coating of our water tower. Um, we did have Bolton Mank go through, do the inspection, so I will let Chuck walk us through there.
Yeah, thank you. Well, as Ron mentioned, well, we currently did, recently did an inspection and evaluation on the, on the tower. Um, basically, we're looking at the coating system, uh, to see where, where it was at and, uh, what, what improvements are gonna be needed moving forward. Um, basically, the coatings are in fair condition out there still, which is a good sign. Uh, so we looked at a few different options. Uh, really, the, the three sort of improvements would be to do a spot repair and an overcoat. You know, that's estimated to cost about $125,000. Uh, it's anticipated the life expectancy to be in that seven to 10 years range, but we have seen these actually last well beyond 10 years as well. But the coating manufacturers usually say in that 10 to 10 to, or seven to 10-year range. Another option was to do a complete sandblast where we'd move all of the existing coating and then, uh, sort of put a whole new coating system on. That's about a $375,000, uh, cost, and that, that life expectancy nears that 20-year timeframe. And then the last option was just to build a whole new ground storage tank, which is, uh, gets fairly expensive, that 1.1 million. So, uh, after discussion at public, with the public works committee, uh, the thought was is that the op, option to do the overcoat for 125 made the most sense. Uh, we are planning to do a, sort of a test strip on the tower, a couple little test spots to make sure that the overcoat will adhere to the, under the existing coating system sometime this summer. And, uh, moving forward, if there comes, wishes to continue to move forward with this, we bring it back next, uh, winter, you know, for authorization. Don't go out and get votes for that work.
How old is that water tower? Seventy-nine?
Correct.
Correct. That was put in along with the industrial part. That was part of the industrial part.
Really?
Yes.
And then we'll just come back in February and talk about it, right?
Yes.
The, um, option two, that's just exterior? It's not doing anything interior?
No, there'd be a, um, overcoat to the interior as well.
Okay.
Oh, thanks for the pictures, Sue. I was kinda wondering what it looks like. Okay, and that's informational at this time. Then, uh, item D, well number eight, rehab on page 33.
Thank you. Yes, well number eight was installed in 2001, um, at a maximum capacity of 1,000 gallons a minute. Normally, we run it about, uh, five to 600. Um, over the years, we have seen a little bit of, uh, capacity loss there, so it is definitely time to rehab it. Recall, last year we did rehab well number seven, and if I move on to this year, we have well number eight now. And we do have two prices, and the low being from Tine Well in the amount of 16, 642.50. It was a public works recommendation that we do go along with that.
Um, is there, for the exact same thing, a $10,000 difference is apples to apples? I mean, that seems like, that's 30%?
That's a lot, I agree.
Yeah.
And exactly why, I can't, uh, tell you. I mean, so I think we've seen the same thing on the roofing at the last meeting. There was a huge difference. And if one contractor is a little bit hungry and the other one...
Apparently. A little busier?
But they're both very good, reputable contractors and...
I was just thinking, maybe one thought it was 50 feet, one thought it was 150.
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Tine Well for $16,642.50 for the rehab of well number eight with funds to come from the Water Equipment Reserve Fund.
for the rehab of well number eight with funds to come from the Water Equipment Reserve Fund.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, second by to approve the quote from Tine Well for $15,642.50 for the rehab of well number eight with funds to come from the Water Equipment Reserve Fund. Discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And then, as was noted, we had a special working session the other night and prior to that, we had a little working group with, you know, the school district and that. And so, report and discussion, we put this on here just in case something came up from that, that we wanted to address.
We set another working session for next Monday.
Next Monday.
Because we didn't get to all the items.
Yeah. Do you think anybody wants to bring up from there, or we carry that on till the next one? All right. And we'll go on to item number eight, airport T-hanger leases on page 39.
Great, thank you, as the hangar is near completion, we have now begun to sign contracts with the people or pilots that wanted to get in there, and the new building will be full. There's one change on there, and that is the person who was going to go in hangar 10 will now go into hangar 38. The eight units, they will all be completely full, and the old units currently, we do have two vacancies, of which one is intentional, but we do wanna keep one for our daily, weekly, monthly rentals. We did have two pilots who did kick the can down the road a little bit, so to speak, and said, keep us on the waiting list.
I'm glad you finished that.
Kick the can.
Kick the can.
As long as it ain't the bucket.
I would anticipate the other vacancy will be full within several months.
I'll make the motion to approve the airport T-hanger lease agreement between the city of Painesville and Curtis Newberg, Peter Hasinger, John Marshall, Randy Boobolds, John Erickson, Dwayne Schuler, Wilbur, Bolsh Orson, Dan Gross, and John Bayer and Michael Beckhoff.
Motion by LeBeau, second by Hertzberg to approve the airport T-hanger lease agreements between the city and those names as listed there on page 39, discussion?
Ron, is Mr. Erickson local?
Mr. Erickson is a Belvedere Grove City.
Okay, and it's not an issue, I'm good.
See, Ron, I brought this up mostly because of one situation that you and I are aware of. Maybe it's not a concern, but I just, you think it's clear enough the way it is, most of the pilots understand. I just, you know, my concern was in paragraph 17 to just hammer home the point that this is not for general storage, it's for aviation and aviation-related stuff. I was suggesting to Ron maybe adding another sentence. It kind of already says that, but I think Ron and I are aware of at least one situation where it seems to become a collection of general stuff. And, you know, I think actually if we were competing against other rental storage places for general stuff, we'd be on the cheap end, probably. But we don't want people doing that, we don't, we don't wanna be competing with other people that are in the storage business. We're there for airplanes and airplane-related or flight-related things that pilots need to store. That was my only concern about the lease.
They have an aircraft in their general storage?
Well, I think they have an aircraft, but they have so much other stuff that's gotten in there that you couldn't get the plane out if you wanted to at this point, so it just kinda gets to be a question of what's it really being used for.
I think we could take that back to the Airport Commission at some point and then run it through the proper channels.
Very good.
So are you talking about, Bill, something other than that sentence that says the hangar must not be used for general storage?
Right, I mean, just to expand on that a little bit, to make it clear that you can have stuff that's related to your airplane and things that are necessary for, for flight and so forth, but not.
Not boats and motorhomes?
Right. Or other general clutter.
Well, if you can get your motorhome in there with your plane. Because the first sentence fairly well spells it out.
It does, it does, it seems like it would be understandable as it is, it's probably, probably overthinking it.
While we do a motion and a second, any other discussion? And with the understanding that we're gonna take a look at that.
Yes.
Yep. All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. That's it for new business, old business, coronavirus always on our radar screen here on page. We do have an update here, two things that we are going to be looking at, I think. Tom, do you want us to give us an update?
So last week, me and Melinda sat down, or Melinda sat down and came up with the COVID plan for the critical sector business. There had to be some changes that had to be made into this one compared to the one that we did for motor vehicle. And I think you each got a copy of that, and that has to be submitted to the state here shortly. So if there's any questions on that, it's pretty much the same thing as we had before, we just had to do some tweaking. The other thing is, we finally got our thermometers in, so Public Works, police, and liquor store now have their thermometers are now in compliance with our plan that we set a couple weeks ago.
I'll make the motion to approve the city of Painesville preparedness plan for COVID-19 to continue to keep the city open as a critical sector business.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, second by Ranky to approve the on the right page here, did I read it right? Prove the city of Painesville preparedness plan for COVID-19 to continue to keep the city open as a critical sector business, discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And we're gonna talk about staffing too, and get an update as to how things have been going. People have been lined up out the door as far as city hall.
They have been, Friday was probably our worst day since we reopened. It was all of 5:10, 5:15 before the last customer left. And that does not include any cleanup time, logging off, any, anything like that. This morning was super manageable, it was actually a good breather. And then noon hit, and again, it was about six after five before the last person left. I know that Melinda was gonna look into hours shutting the door early, she's on knocking in right now. So I do believe we'll have to get awareness for that, if that were to happen. I did talk to the girls about what policies and procedures we talked about and what we had talked about at the council meeting that, I don't know if the council will hear and if that overtime would be somewhat allowed, but not abused. And that's kinda where we stand right now. We did get an email update today from the state, and there's only 14 stations that are to be testing in the entire state. So that is why, today we had somebody from Brainerd, we had Bemidji, we had Marshall, we had Owatonna, we even had the Bayers from Wilmer came today because Wilmer's only taking appointments. So our, lots of people come to our town, for whatever reason, a ton of people come to our town. Hopefully, as people open up, some of that will diminish, but our, we are broadening our capacity.
Do we need a mo, do you wanna?
I think Melinda is looking, and maybe Ron is too, and I want to see that turn here, that they're looking for some approval, so that it's in the minutes, so that we can always go back to them and say this is what the council approved.
I would make a motion then to authorize city hall staff to work overtime as deemed necessary by our city administrators.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, second by Gilmore, and did you get that down, Jennifer? Basically, it's to authorize the department heads to authorize overtime as needed to handle the additional.
Yeah, the DMV.
I think, I turned that around backwards.
To authorize overtime to the city hall staff as necessary by, and authorized by the city administrators.
We don't need part of the motion to looking into closing the door earlier?
We are doing that.
Okay. But I mean, if they say we can, are we going to?
Ultimately, that would be up to the.
I think we didn't wanna bring that back before we would.
Okay.
Do, I feel like we should put a timeframe on that, to reevaluate.
Well, I would think in two weeks, we would have a pretty good idea.
We'll be back here in two weeks anyway, so.
And we'll even have an update for you, potentially a working session.
We don't foresee any change in time from, coming from the state on opening anything up within two weeks, do we?
I, not on the DMV side.
Yeah.
Melinda, Melinda would be more in tune to that.
Okay. I think we'll be okay for two weeks. Other staffing is okay? Things are kinda normal?
No, in summer, it's always busy.
Yeah.
Has Bill said, I think, we approved additional hours for, is he, is that working? Anybody?
That is working, that is working. I don't know much more than that, but it is working, and he is also out, so we haven't had any SOS calls, so it must be working.
Yeah, I understand businesses kind of leveled off a little bit.
I have not seen the final numbers for May yet.
He did say something at the working session about, he didn't have employees that could come over here and help with things, so.
Okay, so we do have a motion in regards to overtime with the city hall staff that's up to the state administrator to authorize that, correct? The motion was?
Yeah.
Any discussion on that?
I think we should revisit it at our next meeting and have an understanding of sort of what we're looking at, how many hours are needed, what, I get the need to authorize it now, but if it's gonna continue, we need to have a better idea of what this looks like.
Yep. Understood. Okay, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the other thing was the city's emergency declaration status, which has been running concurrent with the governors, to whether or not to continue that, to let that be put to rest, and if need be to, if it was needed, to go through that process again. So it's up to the council.
I think given the uptick we've seen in a bunch of other states, we should leave well enough alone for right now.
Okay, we will continue on as we have been. Yeah, who knows what's gonna be happening? Anything else on COVID-19 or the coronavirus? Okay, then move on to the city emergency operations plan. Tom's been working on that, and we did get a secondary document here, the draft of that. You might have had a chance to look through that.
I'll make the motion to approve the city of Painesville emergency operations plan.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, second by Hertzberg to approve the city's emergency operation plan. Any discussion?
Tom, I sent you a bunch of notes earlier, did you get a chance to review those?
Yep.
Okay, are they things that are worth discussing, or?
You know, I think they are changes that should be made. One of the things I really wanna look at is the whole Blizzard emergency, the three stages that we do. Since I've been here, we've never actually done that. The thing is nowadays, I mean, all of our squads are four-wheel drive, so I don't think we really need to point out in our emergency plan that the police chief will contact me and tell me that I need to drive a four-wheel drive vehicle. You know, some of the things it talks about is we'll be in contact with the on-call plow operator. Well, our plows are contracted out, so who is the on-call plow operator? Since that's not done by the city. I think we could get rid of those stages to a certain extent. Maybe that's something that me and Chief Wagner and Chief Soining and Steve Stan can sit down and discuss at some point. But it just doesn't, you know, some of them don't make sense, like a stage one alert for four to six inches of snow, the on-duty police officer will ensure that the four-wheel drive vehicles are available. We only have one two-wheel drive vehicle. And if I can't figure out that I need to drive a four-wheel drive based on the road conditions, then maybe I shouldn't be in emergency management or a police officer at all, so. I mean, that's, is that something you guys still want in there, or is that something we can look at, maybe removing and kinda cleaning this up?
Well, most of your vehicles are I will drive anyway.
Yeah.
So you can't take them out of I will drive. You don't have a choice.
Yep.
It, it's like anything that, you know, like our comprehensive plan or whatever, you know, it always needs to be looked at, tweaked and updated. And I know that, you know, the phone numbers in the other one were just, people have been gone for several years.
Yeah. The other thing I wanna do is kinda get this on a timeline of, so it's not every year we're looking at this, but pick out certain chapters and, you know, over a three-year process, we look at chapters one through three, the next two years we look at this, and make it a more of a continuous thing. I mean, the last review date was in 2009, so that's a long time from now. And I don't want it to be that long again until we pull this thing out and look at it. In the future, I'd like to work with police, fire, and ambulance and actually set up, you know, maybe some training on going through this thing. You know, opening up that communication and that dialogue, because things may have changed from 2009 to the way we wanna do with things now, whether it's police, fire, or ambulance, so.
And we've had a couple opportunities to actually put some of this into, into action.
Yes.
Hey, anything else? All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And then the police policy, use of force, age 57. Something also coming out of our happenings at levels above here. And thanks to the, you know, chief and the policy and procedures, we do have a plan here before us, a policy.
Yep, and you had put G and H in there, that was pretty much exactly how we worded it, correct? On page 61?
Yeah, that new policy, that 600.07, oh no, I'm sorry.
Which one?
You're on the right page, and I am, I was ahead of you. Yeah, so policy, I mean, we have, what, of our two-hour meeting, I think an hour and 45 minutes was devoted to these policies. I think everyone was on board with the intention of being, how do we prevent something like what happened in Minneapolis from happening here? The yellow additions are the things that we agreed to change. Glenn pointed out the highlights on page 61, those G and H, the vascular necrostrain ban, along with clarifying that once the use of force is no longer necessary, it must terminate, and then we call for medical assistance. Those were helpful, along with, if you look on page 70, there's a 600.07 is a new section where every year is part of the ongoing training that our officers do, one of those trainings will be in cultural diversity, along with crisis response and conflict management, so de-escalation training, and then of those, they have to go to one in-person. And then of those, they have to go to one in-person of each of those categories during every three-year licensure period.
Just trying to, we're trying to be very proactive. And so that we're concerned, and but giving them the tools to succeed. Is the right wording.
So this may have gotten lost somewhere in the shuffle of things at the end of last year, but I know at one time there was some talk of putting together like a crisis response team of potentially people like in the community, perhaps from Centricare or something that were, had a little more training in mental health things that could be called on. Has anything gone anywhere with that?
To my knowledge, nothing has materialized with that. What I will tell you is everything I'm hearing from the Chiefs Association of Legislature, and I would kind of make the recommendation with, you know, we have changes that we've made here. I expect we're going to have to make more changes. So, you know, it's kind of like, kind of need to leave this open. I think we're going to see some mandated stuff potentially down from the state at some point, whether it happens this year or later, dealing with those crisis intervention teams. The problem with most of those, quite honestly, is really the cost, and how do you, how exactly do you figure those out? You know, are you going to have a social worker on 24/7 so that when we have these calls, they're responding right alongside with us? And quite honestly, I don't think our folks at the legislature have quite figured that out yet, so.
No, the way it looks, if we wait for the legislature for anything, we could be waiting for a while, a long time.
What I'm hearing is, you know, and we've actually been preemptive in this. It wasn't something that came out of the meeting, but as I was reviewing some different things, there were components of what they were talking about that, quite honestly, whether or not they choose to put it into law or not, I think we're probably going to incorporate into the, into our policies anyways. A lot of it was, you know, a responsibility to intervene, you know? So if you see another officer who is clearly, you know, using excessive force, that sort of thing, you have a responsibility to intervene in that and not just stand by. You know, we've actually added into this one, the designation that the police department, you know, understands and recognizes everybody's, you know, that every life is valuable and the sanctity of life, which they're talking about model policies that have that language. So we're kind of, we're preempting them and putting that in here now, which I think is good. And I think we're going to see, like I said, we're going to see more changes coming. It's just a matter of what, and whether or not anybody can agree on anything, so.
Well, one thing I forgot to bring up at the policies meeting is should we start looking into body cams for all of our officers? And I know I've pushed on it before, so I'm going to do it here. I think we should.
Absolutely. That's one of the things that's actually looking at coming out of the legislature. It's one of the things that will be a project as soon as I can get off of FTO with guys to start putting that stuff in place. The problem we have is, you know, we've got to have, obviously, we got to have our policies in place, but then we also need, you know, to have our community meetings and stuff like that to discuss those things. The nice thing coming out of legislature is they're talking about putting grants out there for a million dollars this year, a million dollars next year. So it's something I want to get at least to the point where we're ready to go. It looks like they're going to be looking at a matching grant for that, so, you know, where we would have to put up money, and they would put up money for it. But best guess right now is we're probably anywhere between $15,000 to $20,000 to do that. The cameras themselves aren't that expensive, but the storage on the back end is what's going to be the problem. So it is in the works, and it will be in the works, because there's only going to be so much money. I mean, $2 million across the state of Minnesota is not going to be a lot of money to accomplish mandatory body cams. And that's actually one of the other, I think the House has it in theirs. By 2024, they're going to mandate it for all law enforcement in the state. By 2022, it's going to be for first-class cities, so.
To me, that makes, it makes sense in smaller departments to have the body cameras. You know, you talk about if an officer sees another officer doing something wrong. If you've only got one officer, you either have the body cam, you know, the footage, or if it's been turned off, you have that fact as backup for whatever. So, you know, in a smaller force like ours, I think that would be, you know, necessity, the way things are happening now.
I was always kind of on the fence with them until I started working in Swift County, and they have them out there, and they are phenomenal tools. We could save time on Bill going to court because we'd have fewer contested hearings, because it's harder to say, no, the cop never told me that, when there's a video of the officer telling the person that. And I, I mean, I know we've got money sitting in like our DWI forfeiture funds, the capital improvement. I think we should just get it done. I don't think it pays to wait for the state, because by then, we're still going to be shelling out a number of thousands of dollars, and things will have gone up because there will be greater demand at that point.
It's budget time.
It is budget time, but I mean, we've got the money. There's $20,000 sitting in the DWI forfeiture fund right now. There was as of.
If there is, it's news to me. I believe that, that fund, based on my tally, is somewhere around $10,000 or less.
Okay. Yeah, as of April 30th, it was $20,000.
I'll have to get with Belinda because I don't think that number's right.
I think maybe we should direct the chief to get prices, hardcore prices for the cams. And I know your hardware is going to be the most expensive part of it. And bring it back to, can you have it back to our next meeting, two weeks?
No. No, because there's, even if I get that information for you, I mean, body cams like a car. You know, it's not, there's not one size fits all. So, you know, it's going to be looking at what are our different options that are out there. Our goal all along has been to get with watch guard and integrate them in with our squad cameras so that we have not just what's on the body cam, but we have the squad cam as a whole. You know, we made quite an investment there. So, I mean, I can get you numbers, but we're not going to be able to move ahead with any of that because there's a set procedure by legislature and how we have to move forward, so.
Can we send this over to the Budget and Finance Committee to look at and make a recommendation as you get things put together?
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely something that's airborne, and I intend on, you know, moving forward.
Well, we need to know if it's going to be $15,000, $40,000, $20,000.
Well, I can tell you that when we looked at doing a wireless system on our cars, right now, when we have our video in our cars, I have to physically go into each of them, grab the flash drive, download it. So when we looked at doing the wireless download to a server at that point, we were pushing probably $9,000, $9,000 to $10,000. And a lot of that had to do with the server itself.
Right.
So that's where a majority of our cost will be.
No, we just need a concept price.
Yep.
And then we can go to the Budget and Finance if they had a concept price and figure it out from there, not?
Yeah, I mean, if you bring the options to Budget and Finance, and Budget and Finance can make a recommendation, I mean, that's. The process we follow with all the other.
There's going to be grants within a year. We aren't making a lot of money. The last time I looked at our budgets.
Well, and I want this ready to go because regardless of whether it's, you know, a year from now or two weeks from now, you know, they're pushing the legislature to get something done. I expect that that's going to be a big component, and if they're talking, you know, 2020, a million dollars in 2020 if that grant comes up, I want to be able to get in, apply, and do what we can to save that money if possible.
Yeah. I think it'd be nice to be prepared and ready to do whatever. That sounds good. I'll make a motion to approve the revised use of force and deadly force police policy.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to approve the revised use of force and deadly force police policy. Discussion on the motion?
Just to note that, as chief said, this is ongoing.
Yeah.
Well, you'll see it again.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried? Like our emergency policy, we need, you know, all those need to be looked at more often than they probably have been. Okay, the last business item here, ordinance number 1430 series, smoking. And we're down on page 71. And.
This was one of the things on our agenda for our working session that we did not get to, the discussion on that. So we had, I believe, asked to put it on our working session again for next week.
Okay. It was at the Policies and Procedures Board. We never got to it because we're at the police policy use of force, and I believe we wanted to discuss it again.
I thought so too. So my understanding, and maybe I misunderstood, was that it would go to the working session for some additional input, and then back to policies for further revision.
Makes sense.
Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, that was what I had in my head.
Yep, that's what, we thought we were going to bring it back because we've got, the use of force and deadly force is so much a priority over this, that we spent our whole time on that one. And there are a lot of questions that were in this ordinance or proposed ordinance anyway that need to be raised and addressed. Does this need to be tabled or just no action? Just no action. It'll go to the working session coming up and then come back. Because here goes the Policies and Procedures win in two weeks.
That could be a tall novel of July.
Maybe we don't have anymore?
You denied setting it in that one.
We'll be deciding setting a special one.
July 8th.
That'd be so much fun.
So July 8th would be the next Policies and Procedures. It is on the special working session for June 29th. It would go to Policies and Procedures on the 8th.
Yep.
And then potentially, whatever comes out of them, it could go back on council on the 13th.
So if it's already been posted for 10 days, and so we were to discuss it on next Monday at our working session, would it necessarily need to go back to Policy and Procedures?
Do what?
Not that it's too deep necessarily.
Yeah.
Sometimes they make recommendations on ordinances, but if it's a working session and they're part of the council.
Sounds like a plan.
Is that working session?
Yeah. Yep.
What time would that be?
Six o'clock. Yeah. Okay, then we have the informational there. We have the May reports as listed, the West Central Sanitation report, the list of information from taxes in regards to the wind and solar farm productions, the July and August meeting schedule, and a notice from the Highway 23 Coalition that they are still hard at work, looking at some plans for Highway 23. Then we'll be going into closed session to discuss an offer on real property located at 475 Kira Lane, Lot 16, Block 1, out in Heatherwood, Platte 2.
It's really Platte 3.
Platte 3. I misread that, that two.
You might have read it right.
Looks so much like.
A 3?
A 3. No, the 3 so much looks like a 2.